I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Southbridge Public Hearing Tax Classification. Call the meeting order. I'd like to turn it over at this time to Manny Silva. We're going to welcome, welcome the town to the Tax Classification Public Hearing. The purpose of this hearing is pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56 on the adoption of the residential factor for tax purposes and the adoption of the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. Any person wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Manny Silva, the principal interim assessor.
Well, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to have Jack if he could come up because somehow it's not clicking onto that. It's just, so as we go through it, like, it just. Jack set it up, so he's the guy.
Somebody fooled around with it.
Yeah, I guess. Just first on that one to come down.
This side, this side?
This side goes down.
Oh, yeah, it just goes that way. Good.
Good. Well, again, good evening. I'm Manny Silva, the interim assessor. And the board has developed some values. We actually submitted them to Department of Revenue. All our values are certified, and we're good to go. Now, we just have to present the council with some of the options that you have before you. You actually have three options. You have an option of splitting the tax rate between residential and commercial and developing a minimal residential factor. The minimal residential factor will be the least amount that you could actually tax residents, and it's calculated to be approximately 88.28%. So that's one of the issues. And you can actually defer or switch between rates anywhere 10%, even 1% increments, if you'd like to do a smaller amount. So these illustrations will show you what happens when you actually decide to go to full residential factor, and then you can just figure most of them as we go on. The second one would be the residential exemption. Now, that exemption will actually shift some of the burden from the higher-end homes and give some reduction in taxes to the lower homes. It stays solely within the residential, doesn't affect commercial, just the residential. And then there's a third option, which is the small commercial exemption, and that's 10% that you can actually shift within the commercial itself only. That will give the, any commercial property that's under $1 million and has 10 employees or less, they would get the benefit of 10% in savings on their taxes. Now, it's important to understand that that there applies to the actual real estate and not to the property owner. So, and so, the owner would actually, I should say, the owner would actually get the benefit, not the business, if the business is renting and it's not theirs. And then there is another option for the open space, which we do not have or you do not have in this community. There is no open space, so you have no decision to make there. Some of the pretty pictures that you have around town, and also explanation of the rates that can apply. The, let me see here, hold on. Personal property. Now, personal property is another tax that is used and is taxed for communities, and that's everything that any company has, whether it be a computer, dentist's chairs, office desks, all of that. And there's different criterias for these taxes, whether you're incorporated, LLCs, and just strictly individuals, they get taxed on pencils if you really want to go down that far. Ludicrous, but. Here's the breakdown, and you can see by this little graph here that the residential, obviously, is the big portion of the tax revenues that we collect. And then the others are small. And here's what happened this year. This year, we had a significant value increase to residences. Last year, the average single-family home was $245,000, and to this year, it went up to $306,000 for the average home. Now, this here explains what growth is, and growth is anything that, any new homes, any new additions, any new subdivisions, anything that the community grew by. It actually allows you to increase your levy limit by the amount of taxes that you're collecting for these new developments, new properties and whatnot. This here is the budget that the town has passed. The second line would be the total estimated receipts that the town will be collecting and leaving you with a tax levy of, and actually, that's a tax levy that the town must collect to run a community. This chart here is how the levy limit is actually calculated. This is strictly done by the Department of Revenue. They issue this out, they check our growth numbers. We have to submit a lengthy list of growth, and they give us what they allow for our levy to grow up to. And this is an important number because we can only tax up to 2.5%. So as this number goes up, that's what we can go up to, and that's it, no more. So if you can see there that this year, the community had $208,294 in growth, which was added to the levy limit from last year, as well as the allowable 2.5%. And then there's the debt exclusions the community had, which the maximum allowed So we get to the splits. Single tax rate, obviously, everybody pays an equal amount based on the devaluation of their property, their businesses, everything. Everybody gets the same thing. Shifting rates would put more burden on the CIPs, which is the Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Property Classes. And here's the breakdown that it's virtually the same. In fact, actually, the residential went up a very small amount compared to the commercial. So that's where you have approximately 19% of your value is commercial, industrial, and personal property. Well, you see, the shifts are communities that are up in a 30%, 40% because once you shift, you don't really impact these properties as much. And then within the, this one here will show you within the commercial-industrial actually which percentages there are for industrial, personal, and commercial. So by calculating the tax rate recap, all the funds they were collecting, all the state revenues that are supplying, we have come up with the approximately $25,006 is what we estimate is needed for the community. And by doing this, the total valuation is 1.6. We calculate and divide, and the tax rate is actually coming down to 26, oh, 26, 25,26 per thousand. Last year was, we had 1884, 1584. And here's the, here's the average, what happens, single-family home, where the values went, and what the rate is, what the rate was. In actuality, there's going to be an increase of $159.79 to the average single-family home. I know that it looks like the tax rate went down, and people usually think that your taxes are going to decrease. That doesn't really happen in this day and age. Expenses go up and so on and so forth. So it's just an adjustment, it's just a calculation that happens. These are the values. Sorry, that's small, but working with this thing is tough. Yeah, the community went up to $1,006,82,258,286. These are just calculations that the Department of Revenue has on their gateway system, and there's different things you can put in there. In fact, there's some communities that are allowed to go up to 175. I believe Boston is probably the only one that does it at this point. So there's different calculations that you can put. This just shows you how to do it and how to go about doing it, which is very cumbersome. But here's what happens with developing the minimal residential factor. So the minimal residential factor, if you were to shift the full 150 to the commercial, the factor is, as I said before, is 0.8828 approximately. And here's what the tax would do. If you were to do that, the residential tax rate would come down to 1346. However, the commercial-industrial would go up to 2289, and that's at 88. Certainly can do it at 95, 90, and you can see the rates there accordingly, how they work. This illustration will show you that at the average single-family home, if you were to stay the same, the taxes are $4,669.56 for both, or for all four classes. Now, however, if you switch to 88, the taxes would come down considerably for the residential home. They would benefit a $547 reduction in their taxes. However, the commercial would go up 2,334 for a $306,000 value only. And then the bottom there, I did it also at $500,000 to see what happens. Residents would get $890 with the commercial properties for that amount of value would increase $3,800. And then in the bottom there, just shows you different illustrations of different tax rates that you could do at 10% increments. Open space, obviously, you did not adopt an open space discount, so there is no decision to make there. Now, the small commercials, as I said before, it's, you have to get the Labor Department to send you a notice of all properties that have less than 10 employees. You've got to look at it, and then we have to find out which ones are $1 million or less and determine which ones qualify. You have to add them up. I just did a quick illustration of, say, 25 parcels that would qualify and what would happen. So you'd have to take the value out and divide it out, and you, again, you would develop a different rate. And here's the impact. It's at $400,000, $800,000. You have approximately $2,000 in difference between shifting the 10% to the lower end to the higher end of properties in town. Also, the residential exemption. Now, that, a couple of years ago, they switched to, you can actually go up to 35% switching from the low end, I mean, from the high end to the lower end. And typically, there's a 10%. Some communities have done it, not many. Again, it's a mechanism where you can give the lower-end properties and cost of living, really, people that are not as fortunate to have expensive properties, and we have the higher-end properties pay for the difference that these properties would save. These are illustrations here of approximately what happens to the tax rate and what happens at certain values and how much savings they get at certain values. Mine is even smaller than the one up there, but. So before you, that's the gist of it, what the decision of the board is, that they have before them. And if there's any questions, certainly, we can at least try to answer.
Are there any questions at this time? Council Mike Huddy?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I've always wondered how you assess the value of property in Southbridge. For example, my own house, I live up on Maria Avenue, and my house last year was valued at $229.5. This year, it's valued at $309.5, which is 11% increase. Now, I've done nothing to my house to improve it whatsoever. No one from the assessor's office has come to my house to take a look at my house to see if I've done anything to it. So an 11% increase, and yet I did nothing to the house, it makes me wonder, how do you come up with assessed values like that? Furthermore, I was looking at some examples of some commercial properties in town. For example, the Fair Plaza. In 2022, it was purchased for $12.6 million, and yet today, it's valued $11.3 million. So that's a, what, something like a 10% less than what it was purchased at. So that's a clear, precise example of something that, if you're basing it on sales, this is something that was sold at $12.6 million, but yet is worth less today than it was when it was purchased. Another example is the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center. In 2021, it was valued at $31 million. 2023, it was valued at $21 million. Today, it's valued at $20.9 million. That's a 32.5% decrease in the value of the hotel and conference center. So I've done no major improvements to my home. I see that the, some of these commercial properties, they do a lot of improvements there, they have a lot of things going on, they're always full, there's a lot of conferences going on, there's police training academy over at the hotel. So again, my question is, how do you assess the value of property in Southbridge when my home, which I've done nothing to it, has gone up, and these other commercial properties, their value have come down?
Well, there's quite a few questions that you have, actually, but going to value of homes, we value homes based on what's happened in the current market, and we have to value them. That's the way the legislation is written. Do you remember Proposition 181, what was it, Proposition 85, something like that, way back in the 80s? The past mandated that we assess properties as close as possible to 100%. Now, individual properties are not looked at each and every year because that would be physically impossible. The community would never afford to get that all done. So what you do is you look at typical homes, what's happening to typical homes, let's say, ranches, caves, what's happening in Colonials. And we analyze actually by a lot, a lot of factors, and we try to get as close as possible to what homes are and do comparables. So we have a system where we put in the sales, we analyze probably 200 to 300 sales for the past two years, and where is the sales in relation to the assessed value. Now, your assessed value, what it looks like, probably went down to, in the, I don't know, I want to say probably 80% of market value. The Department of Revenue does not allow us to be under 10% or above 110%. We have to be within, somewhere within that range, and the assessors try to be a few, a couple of points only away from that. So once you get that, you plug in what your values are, and you determine what your costs would be for certain things, plug these costs in, and the computer will generate a value and get us as close as possible. So no, not necessarily will they go to your house, and nothing's been done. However, that's not always what happens. I mean, you probably have some homes that haven't been lived in or vacant for 10, 15 years. Their value still went up, even though they're probably even less, the upkeep is even less. But it's just the value that you're going to get on the market as of January 1st, 2023. What is that value? And as you know, everybody knows, they've just gotten crazy, these values. Every community, everywhere. And if you go towards the Boston area, it's even worse.
But it doesn't work for commercial property?
Now, the commercial properties, that's a whole nother animal. Commercial properties, yes, we do it based on comparisons. However, most of commercial properties is done on an income base. It's based on what the income approach to value is. So it's what a typical warehouse or a typical storefront will bring on the market, and it's basically done on rents. So in others, if you can, if you have a piece of property that can generate a certain amount of money, and then the investor's going to come in and say, oh, this property's generating a lot of money, I'm going to pay a lot for it. And the others might not be as valuable. So that's what happens. And yes, certain properties become less valued. For instance, you take right now, as assessors, there's a problem with big warehousing, big store. Nobody wants a big store anymore. So to market those, it's difficult. So now you look at their value, they have vacancy losses, they have all kinds of things that you have to put into your calculations, and the value will come down, unfortunately.
All right. Well, I was pointing out specific examples of how they were worth more at one time, and now they're not worth as much.
Right.
Okay. Then my other question is, in your budget presentation here, you determine the tax levy. The first question is, $78,957,000. I don't know if you can pop that up on the screen or not, but I remember when we voted last spring, we voted on a $72 million budget. So I was wondering where that extra money came from. And then the other question I had was, when you have budget at $78,957,036, and your receipts are $53,484, the tax levy $25,676,190, when I subtract those numbers, the number is $25,473,036. So where did that come from? Where did that number come? Right there, yep? If you subtract the $53,484 from the $78,957, I come up with $25,473, not $25,676. So is there something that I'm missing here, something that's not in?
Well, yeah. Well, for that, we'd have to go into the actual, do you have the, I mean, the exclusion, debt exclusion? That could be, that's $200,000, so I'm not sure that that's in. But you'd have to go, and these numbers are strictly done on the recap, which is the state system that we have to enter all our values in. As far as the $78,000, these are done by the town accountant and your departments, and they put in all the numbers that are, that come through the meetings and budgets and all that stuff, and that's the number that gets brought in right into it. I don't do those numbers. Those are the numbers that I have and that I have to work with on this, on these, on this form. That gets brought in right in from the town clerk when she does her numbers from the meeting. And then the levy itself is done from the state levy, and that's what we added on to. And the revenues are, again, are done on local receipts, they're done also by the accountant. She comes up with the revenues, gets an estimate. I will say that your revenues are, projections are very low this year, which is good. You should be able to meet those revenues, and you won't have a deficit next year. Now, I don't know if you, if I mentioned or if you saw on this one here, that you have an excess levy capacity of $1,337, which is considerable. Now, that doesn't go away, that stays there, so next year, if you run into problems, you'll have that capacity to raise your rates. You won't be going over your levy limit, you won't get into issues where, where I worked before, I actually said, hey, there's no way I can, there's no way I can meet these numbers. We have to go back, we have to quickly do a town meeting and get numbers cut and budgets cut and everything, which was cumbersome. But that's where they come from.
Okay. Thank you.
Wish I had a better answer for you, but I didn't do the, I didn't do the budget or the town meeting or where they actually come from.
I'm also, thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Quick question. Last year, we voted on this when we had Rachel here, and do we have to vote on this again? The open space to vote no on. On your slide, it talks about you voting no. I think last year, we voted no. I'm sorry, we had a motion on the table, and we actually voted on that as well. Does that carry forward? Because I'm looking at the agenda this evening, and maybe I'm missing it. I don't see an open space vote.
Well, I mean, you certainly can vote on an open space. There's a discount that you can apply. I'm not sure that it can be done right at this classification hearing because it has to be done where you develop your classes and probably got to go to Department of Revenue and see which way to actually get that. And if the board, if the council decided that they have something that they would like to do, it's probably something that you can get passed, but there is no, there is no open space class in this community right now. It's just a class.
Right. I understand that. We don't want that, we don't have that, but I know, I believe it was last year, we actually voted on that.
Yes.
Do we have to do it again this year? That's all I'm asking.
You certainly can. A lot of communities don't even discuss it when they don't have it.
No, not even required.
But you certainly can if you want to vote, you know, not to, but since you don't have one, you're taking a vote.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you. I mean, if we don't have to, I got it.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about last year. The other thing, another question I had was, you know, you talk about the split rate, and you talk about commercial. What's the percentage that you would look at as an assessor for a town that says, like, right now, we're 81%, 19%, correct? So where would that 19% have to go to, for us to say, you know what, I think we need to go to split rate?
Quite honestly, for me, in doing it in a lot of different communities, and I work with Springfield, and they're almost half. But that's ridiculous. I mean, you're not getting to that. But communities that have actually shifted have been mostly those that are in a 30%, 30-something percent. That way, it doesn't hurt, you know, the small amount of commercial that you have versus a community that has a lot of them. So they go up just a slight bit when the residents get their discount. So they go up just a slight bit when the residents get the discount. It's like, it's like, you know, you're taking, you're taking money to give residences, but yet your commercials, I mean, it's considerable. You don't have enough. As soon as you have enough, and you're just, you're just splitting it, let's say you were 50/50, then it wouldn't be so bad. But yeah, it's mostly communities with cities. If you look at, if you go on the data bank, there's communities on there that have it. If you look at those, they're all like cities that have a considerable amount of...
Well, I just say that because every year, we talk about it. Sometimes you see 78% and 22%. It comes, it goes up a percentage or goes down. But I didn't know where you guys would recommend where you would split something like that because like Webster, Webster just recently got rid of their split rate.
Yeah, well, what happens with Webster's probably, probably doesn't have enough. And what happens is a commercial gets still expensive. Your neighbor in town is going to get, going to get the commercial entities to come in because, look, we're not going to pay double the taxes we got to pay versus this community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Rivas?
So I have two questions. So you gave us a graphic with the single family home and the single tax rate, where the tax rate actually goes down to 1526, but the annual bill is increased to 159. Would that tax bill still increase if you used a different minimum residential factor, like 95.95? Would that still increase?
Well, to the residences, no. Because the residents now are going to get, going to get, you know, a reduced tax because the commercial is going to pay for it. Just know the taxes would not increase that 159. You might even get that they get, or like if you went to the minimal residential factor, they're saving 500 and something dollars. So take that increase of 159 from the 500 and something, they're only going to increase 300. I mean, they'll have a decrease of 300 and something dollars.
Okay, so in essence, if you sort of, kind of went, rather than go to one extreme, from one extreme to the other, if you sort of gradually did a split to like .95, that would help residents, but it would increase, how much would it increase the commercial?
I think, I think the graph I had there might have shown...
I just didn't see the actual tax bill.
Oh, I probably, yeah, I probably didn't go into... Too far. Well, you can, you can just about do it, like if you were to do 10%. So in other words, if it's 10% of the taxes that I have done illustrated, it would give you somewhat of a picture. Too many slides. Oh, here we go. So here's the minimum residential factors. So you have 90, 95 and 90. Here's what the rates would be. So you have, you have, at 10%, for instance, would be, you know, you have 26 cent rate, so 26 rate on 100 is 260. But to make it actual and calculate, yeah, see, that's, it's, so if you're, for instance, if you, if you did a 25%, and you, and we have 587 dollars of reduction to the, if you did a 25%, obviously, they'd get half of that, which would be 270 reduction at 25%.
And that's for residential.
That's for residential. So they'd actually, for shifting 25, they'd actually get 250 dollars, let's say.
Of a break.
Of a break.
And my other question, thank you. My other question was, how do we do comparing? And I appreciate that you mentioned Webster, but some of the other towns around us, do they all have a single tax rate or?
Any community, like I said, any community with under 20%, I believe all, if, the last time I looked, there was very few communities that split rate, first of all. And any community that has such a loan, they just can't afford it. What happens is, like I said, you tax these, these commercial properties, and their rents have to go up. The nine large aren't going to suffer, so their rents have to go up. Now, are they going to get storefronts, they're going to get these, these, because now they got to, they got to justify their taxes so their rents go up. Their rents go up, you start to see vacancy. And that's another mechanism of, like I explained, to calculate commercial properties, there's a vacancy loss that you put into this calculation, the income to expense ratios and whatnot. Right now, most, most commercial appraisals are done at approximately 5%. You go into some areas, it starts to get into 10%, and that's because they're just not getting the funds that they need. And by doing that, the actual value of commercial property comes down. So you're kind of, you're kind of doing one thing on this side, and then you're dropping the value. So you have to make it, make it so that it's lucrative and worthwhile, and you're not going to lose a lot of, a lot of commercial industry.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the councils? If not, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anybody out there that would like to come forth and ask any questions?
I just had a meeting with them. We'll have... Sorry, Kevin Buxton, 149 Everett Street. I realize, let me first say, I realize nothing I say tonight is going to change the outcome of the evaluations. Short of me saying tomorrow morning, I'll write a check for $78 million, hand it to town manager, and nobody pays anything. It's not going to happen. If I did do that, maybe you'd give me the key to the city, maybe even a key to the town hall. Points I want to make, Mr. Marketti's point of why did the assessed value go up? Why? Because people are selling homes. People are selling homes, and they're making profit. Now, we can look at the glass half full and say, oh, those people who are making profits are reinvesting in, back into our town. Or we can say, those people are leaving. They're taking their profit, they're going to buy, live someplace else. The comment made that, well, if we raise the commercial tax rate, rents will go up. Well, if we raise any taxes, that would mean the rents would go up. If we reduced any taxes, does that mean the rents would come down? No. That's a decision made by property owners, landlords. To say that a landlord raises and lowers his rent, no. Just like taxes are always on the climb, you don't have situations where, geez, you know, my taxes went down, I'm going to reduce your rent. The other point made that commercial exemption, okay? If a, if a commercial property qualifies as less than $1 million, has 10 or less employees, the landlord gets a break on his taxes. Well, if a landlord has a commercial property, and they have 12 employees, and he can't get that exemption, wouldn't the landlord ask the tenant, I need you to get rid of two employees? I want to qualify for that exemption situation. Like I said, nothing is going to change. I think we need to understand too, I very rarely talk about taxes for the simple fact that people don't like the comments and suggestions. But the one, one, one series of, what we need to understand is, if we reduce the residential tax, say 10%, it goes to .9, and then let's say we were going to put that 10% rate on commercial, it would end up as, commercial would be 1.1, all right? 10% is an awful lot. You can reduce the residential tax to .99999999. It's still a reduction. So the point I'm making is if you reduce the tax, the residential tax by 1%, it would be .99. It would raise the commercial tax or disperse it between the other taxes, it would change them to, well, if we dispersed it to strictly to commercial, it would be .01 increase to commercial. Just another thing to consider. Using a 10% fluctuation causes those numbers to fluctuate quite a bit. If we look at a lesser amount, a 1% or something other than that, something to consider. I hope to attend more Board of Assessors meetings. I opened up some can of worms today that I'm going to have to probably chew on for the next 12 months. But I thank the council for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the hearing?
Sorry, all right. I just want to get these before.
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Levenard Hill Road. I've lived in this town since 1978, okay, and I was a kid then. But being an adult, I've heard for a long time, oh, we can't do anything to the businesses. So I'm like, I've heard that a long time, and I've heard, oh, we need more businesses, and that will bring the tax rate down. The property taxes keep going up. So I'm like, why not try doing the split rate? I think it's the split rate, maybe not, I don't know. You know, and also, can't we think of something else to save some costs? Gus here has me say this all the time. I'm like, there's a real lack of imagination, like, can't we figure out something to make the property taxes for regular people go down? There's got to be a way to cut costs. I don't, I don't know, I don't know where. But, you know, it just seems like, it's like, hey, we'll just raise property taxes. It can't go on like this forever. You just can't keep raising them. And like, I don't know, I mean, I don't know a lot about this or anything about this assessing, but they just raise the value of houses, just, it seems, just so they can raise the taxes. I don't know. So my observation is, is just, can't we do something else? And why not try taxing the businesses higher? You know, at least we'll do that. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak? Any other councils? Councilor Shinya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think when it comes to setting the tax rate, a lot of people misunderstand exactly what, what we're doing here tonight. We're setting the tax rate to be able to have and figure out what the bill's going to be when we spend. If we want to lower your taxes in your bill to the community, you cut the spending. And I think that's what happens, at least some of the comments that I've heard over the weekend with the, with the tax, is that people don't understand that we're setting the tax rate. We're not setting a budget, we're not spending money. We're setting the rate on what that budget is going to be billed on. And I, and I think that's, it's something important that the people need to understand. I myself is going to support the single tax rate for both commercial and residential. I, I just don't think we have enough commercial business here in town to justify a cut, especially this day and age. I think the time is going to come during the budget when we're going to have to take some hard choices and try to take, save the taxpayers' money through that. But again, for tonight, I am going to support the single rate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? I'm just going to make a quick comment as a chair. I've sat through many presentations of the setting of the tax rate. The debate is always the same. There was one presentation that stuck out in my mind, I don't know if that was a year or two years ago, where they showed a map of designated areas of towns who had a single tax rate or a split tax rate. As they showed the towns who were in it, who were out of it, and some of them were running away from the split tax rate after they tried it. It was like touching a hot stove. It didn't work for that community, so they went back to the single tax rate. So I've always been supportive of the, the single tax rate. But I think Councilor Shinya brings out a great point. When you talk about taxation, you know, right now, because the values are so high, because people are paying so much more for their homes, so they base it off of the comparison of your neighborhood. So a house that was a $200,000 house, it's a $400,000 house. You see the rate come down, the value go up. It's a balance sheet in the assessors' office. Our Board of Assessors, they do a great job. I think the presentation tonight exemplifies the same thing of many other presentations I've seen, where you do what you think is in the best interest of the community. But the bottom line comes down to is, when you set this, when people vote for fire stations, renovate town halls, roads, sidewalks, it takes money. And it usually comes out of the tax rate. You're snow plowing, you're street sweeping. So services come to play. And these counselors and department heads try to knock the tin on, where's the magic line? If anybody can remember back when 2.5 first came in, there wasn't any 2.5. You just raised your taxes to wherever you wanted to go. And then after the state legislation changed, where you only can go 2.5 unless you have an override or debt exclusion. So going forward, it's, it's always interesting. And I would like to thank Manny Silver and the Board of Assessors for a job well done in the presentation. And I thank you if you have any closing statement. Feel free.
Mr. Chairman, I think I forgot to mention, and I apologize, the Department of Fire, we know, our, our board is here. We have Diane Gukoska and Michelle Spillane, which is a new member. She stepped up, and she's getting adjusted this, and maybe after hearing and doing this, she might decide to not run again. But that's our board. And then Jasmine is our clerk. So they all attended, and we welcome them. Welcome them. Thanks for coming. And yeah, just, just to go along with that, and as you all know, I'm a selectman in Lubbock. We did have a, a year which we, we looked at it. I wasn't a selectman at the time, several years ago. They shifted 10%, only 10%. The very next year, we, they just had to not, not do it and shift it back because it was just a nightmare. So that's just an indication. And if Webster, I didn't know, but if Webster has done it, again, it's just, it's just the communities that have quite a considerable amount of revenues coming in from, from commercial. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the Board of Assessors. Job well done. If there's no further discussion, I will declare the public hearing closed. We'll take a five-minute break.